Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be leading the pledge by, we've got three Boy Scouts from Troop 374 at Blackman Middle, Brennan Reed, Noah Boyd, and Andrew Westgate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have just a moment of silence, please. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. This is our first meeting of the month of June, or second meeting, I guess. We had a work session Tuesday night, so just like to welcome everyone. Approval of agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair, is that a second by Mr. Jernigan?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Eeks. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. No visitors. Number seven, Mr. Odom.
Number seven. Got some introductions this evening. We've got some new principals. First, Dr. Lisa Justice, if you would stand up, so they can kind of see you this evening. She comes to us as the, from the chief academic officer in Wilson County and also Houston High School in Germantown. We're glad to have her onboard with Rutherford County at Blackman High School. The next one is Kim Stoker, the new principal at Siegel Middle School, and she just gets to change rooms, right? The offices a little bit, and do that. We're very much glad to have you there, to continue the good things that's going on there. Thank you very much. And sitting beside her, I think, is Tom Delbridge, our new attendance coordinator. Glad to have him at the central office and working with us here. He is, he's kind of known as one of those really good working with the software, attendance software, scheduling, and believe it or not, that's the department that earns our money. Because if you can't get them scheduled and ADMs counted, then we don't get funded for it. So it's a very, very important position. Glad to have you, Mr. Delbridge. It hadn't been too many years ago since his dad stood up here, right, basically where you sit, right over there, Mr. Young. He was in that area.
Any comments? I'd like, I'd like to just make one to Mr. Delbridge. I'd just like to thank you for the job you did at Siegel Middle and opening the school and carrying it through the years. I always appreciated the way you run the school, because it's, I always had, I could always tell people, everything's black and white out there with you. And there wasn't no, you knew where you stood, so I just appreciate the job you did out there. And I know Ms. Stoker will continue on where you left off, so. Anybody else?
Got some big shoots to fill, so I just wish y'all the best of luck. Here's fortune.
And we're not your boss.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Odom, number eight.
Number eight. We're going to facilities. First is Siegel Middle School Baseball Storage Building. We got anybody here to answer questions tonight, if you've got them, I think. Principal Delbridge has requested permission to build a 20-foot by 28-foot metal storage building adjacent to the third baseline at Siegel Middle School Baseball Field. The building will be built on a slab, have electricity, and will include an overhead roll-up door and a pedestrian door. It will match the existing structures and be funded by the Booster Club. The club will also be responsible for all pertinent permits and code compliance. Gender equity will not be an issue since the board, since the school plans to furnish a storage building for the softball team. Recommend approval. Motion to approve a baseball storage building at Siegel Middle School is presented at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, policies.
Number nine is new and revised policies, and it's been through the policy committee, and the board chair is also on the policy committee, and then had a chance to review them. The latest copies, I think, came to you from, back from the TSBA, so you've gotten those too. So the policies that tonight we're looking at are Policy 5.115, Assignment and Transfer, Policy 4, 400, Instructional Materials, Policy 4, 401, Textbooks, Policy 4, 700, Testing Program, Policy 4, 802, Student Equal Access, and this is a limited public forum, Policy 4.803, Recognition of Religious Beliefs, Customs, and Holidays, Policy 5.200, Separation Practices for Tenured Teachers, Policy 5.201, Separation Practices for Non-Tenured Teachers, Policy 6, 200, Attendance, Policy 6.317, Student Disciplinary Authority, Policy 6.4001, Survey Students, Analysis and Evaluations, Policy 6, 600, Student Records, and Policy 1, 400, School Board Meetings. And for, the purpose is to comply with requirements in new state laws and regulations. The legislature passed several laws, of course, this year that we need to change the language in policies, and this is to comply with that on most of these. So Policy 6.312, Use of Personal Communication Devices and Cellular Telephones, and the purpose for this one is to address and regulate the growing popularity of wearable technology, Google Glasses, Watches, and Rings, that has the capability to record, live-stream, or interact with wireless technology. So our first motion is recommend approval. Motion to waive the second reading and second meeting limitation to allow the board to take immediate actions on the policies presented. You want me to read both motions, or you want to do one?
Let's do one at a time.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Young. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion?
Policy 6.6 on student records is a policy that, upon reading this carefully, I'm not inclined to support the policy revision at this time, and because of that, if it could be excluded from all of this, then I can see my way clear to go ahead with the waiving of the second reading. But I really think that Policy 6.6 needs some additional review, and so I have some concerns there.
Ms. McClure? You want to address?
You don't have to.
If you want to.
Well, the recommendation that you have before you tonight is to adopt TSBA's model policy on student records. If you choose not to do that, and there is, there are some required changes in that policy, so we would need to visit that again relatively soon.
Need to do it by when?
It's transfer of records, isn't it? Is that part of something?
Yes, sir.
You're about to enter the period when you're transferring records, as people move to end of the year.
So the required provisions are regarding transferring discipline records and academic records from one school to another school within the district, or to another district. So those are required changes that we would need to at least add to our current policy if you don't, right, if you don't choose to adopt the model policy. I mean, I will say this, you know, we, we contract with TSBA to provide us guidance on policies, and when I come across one that is drastically different than what we have, I kind of feel like it's my obligation to let you know that and to recommend that we use their policy, because that's, that's why we use their service.
The concern that I have is in the portion that says that authorized school officials may release information from or permit access to a student's educational record without the parent or eligible student's prior written consent in the following instances. So this is not something, and I don't think you'll see it, is that our current policy that's pulled up on the screen?
I can't see the top of it, so I'm not sure.
Line 25, where you starting on that one? Is that it?
Okay. No, this is the TSBA policy. Okay. Yeah, it is at line 25, where it's saying, you know, where we will release, if we could go back down to line 25 now, sorry. Yeah, where we say who we will, who we will release students' records to, and then it goes through and says, these are all of the people that we'll release the students' records to without informing the student or their parent or legal guardian. None of these items are in our current policy, and none of these items are covered under the revision that is made in statute this year. And so this is an addition that we're making, and I don't know that we're necessarily making it completely vetted. We haven't necessarily gone through and, and considered all of these things. Now, while it may be legally binding that if somebody, you know, puts forth a subpoena that we're going to give them the records and those kind of things, this really opens it up. Our current policy states that if that is presented, then the director of schools can approve the release of that information. But this policy would give the guidelines by which that decision could be made at the individual school level, if I understand it correctly.
Are you talking about the court order requirement or the subpoena specifically, or are you generally?
I think more generally, you know, because if the disclosure is an item of directory information, and if I read that correctly, then if the band wants to put together a directory, it's just-
No, sir. No, sir. Directory information is contained in the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act. It is defined as non-confidential information. That's also defined in our student handbook. It is specifically excluded from confidential student information. And that's, we're given, that's given to a parent every year at the beginning of the school year, saying, we will disclose directory information includes field of study, grade level, student name, school attended, there's a whole list of that. So that's, that's federal statute, directory information is.
That we will disclose that to who?
To anybody that requests it, because it's not confidential. It's not classified as confidential under federal law. And that's in our handbook as well.
Okay.
The subpoena requirements are also statutory. There's a whole list of things that we have to do when we get a subpoena and we release records. We have to notify the, both parties that the, that the records are being requested per subpoena. We have to do that within, we have to give them five, at least five days to have hold of that notice, so that they can then try to file something to squash the subpoena, squash the subpoena if they choose to. It has to be double filed in envelopes, or, I mean, it's a whole, so I mean, all of that, and we could go through each one of them, but that's one of the reasons that I recommend using the TSBA policy, because these are items that we have to comply with, and we're just providing an additional notice, that those are things that we will do without providing notice to the parent or having a release from the parent or the eligible student.
So if we're presented with a subpoena, then we do have to inform the parent that we're going to release the records?
Yes. And I think it says that. The school system will make a reasonable effort to notify the student's parent or the eligible student before making the disclosure.
Okay. Then, why then would it be included under the area that says that we'll release it without their consent?
Because I'm not getting their consent. I'm notifying them that there's been a subpoena issued and that we are required to comply, and giving them time to take action to stop the subpoena.
Okay.
But that's statutory.
I guess I could go through, you know, the rest of my concerns here and, and, you know, take a look at this, but we just, we just haven't, we just haven't had the opportunity to discuss this one. And so I'm not inclined to include it in the motion to waive the second reading.
But the problem is that the reason we're waiving the second reading is these have to be initiated immediately to comply with, with state statute.
Well, they have to be, most of them have to be acted upon now, because we need to put them in a student handbook, or we need to put them in a teacher handbook, and then the majority of them have to be enacted by the time school starts.
And we're paying for, we're paying for a service that, that is vetting them along with us.
Correct.
And Mr. Reed, would you, would you have an opinion?
Well, to the extent that the statute mandates these requirements, the policy, I think that you have to follow the statute. To the extent we're deviating from the statute on a case-by-case basis, we'll have to look at these on line, line-by-line basis and have the board review them. You do have the practical difficulty of trying to get all this stuff put together in time for the handbooks to go out, publications to be made, what that deadline is, I'm not, I don't know. But to the extent the statutes require these changes, we are stuck with complying with these.
Are these printed in the handbook, these policies?
This particular one is not, no.
In any of the-
The provisions, most of those provisions listed in there are included in our fur book.
And they're already included right now.
Correct.
There's not a printing deadline that forces our hand on this.
But there, there is a-
There's a statutory, yes. I mean, it has to be, would have to be done by August 1st.
So if there's questions about it, maybe there's one policy we can pull and bring it back and look at it upcoming meeting.
And I'm fine with, you know, putting this one policy on a second reading, you know, or something of that nature. It's just, when it was presented in policy committee, it was an enormous amount of information to digest, and it was not discussed, and it still remains a lot of information to digest.
So we're looking at the next board meeting, is that, what, June 19?
Well, you gotta have, you gotta have a policy meeting before that.
The board can take it up and deal with the policy here at this level, if the board chooses to.
I think, and you're correct, but, but I think if we're going to have a policy committee, that's what we've got the committee for.
Can we have another policy committee?
That's in August, I believe.
August.
So that's where we're staying.
It's-
Well, the other thing, I'm sorry, if I could suggest is, if we can, if you would be comfortable with approving statutory changes, just be added to our current policy at this point, and then I can bring it back for the next policy committee meeting to consider all of these changes, if you'd like to do that. And that would just be the transfer of records that's required by the new legislation.
It may be completely acceptable, exactly the way it is. I just have not digested it enough.
Well, we-
I apologize to my fellow board members for, for being that way, but there are things in here that I don't have enough information to vote in.
But we do need to go ahead and act on the statutory part of it.
That would be confirmed, yes.
So, yeah. I'm okay with, with putting the other part off to the next policy meeting, but, but I would like to move that we, we do add the statutory language to our present policy.
Where are we with our first motion? With the motion that's on the floor? Where are we?
I haven't asked yet.
Are we, do we need to withdraw that motion? That's my point.
Need to amend it, I would think.
Do we need to amend it?
That's what, that's what I was moving to do, just-
Okay. You made the motion?
Well, I think the motion right now, pardon Mr. Eeks, if I could say, the motion right now is to waive the second reading. And if the intent of the discussion is that in the second motion, we're going to amend Policy 6.6, then-
You have to do that under discussion.
Yeah, we'll do that under discussion of the second motion. So there's not really an amendment right now. I guess we can go to a vote on the waive the second reading.
What do we need, Dick?
We got, we got a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Blair on this. Everybody understand what we're voting on?
Do.
Everybody good with it? We're just waiving the second reading.
Since we're waiving the second reading, we don't, we don't have to mention anything in this, in this portion.
No.
Everybody understand what we're voting on?
We're waiving the second reading because of the urgency of-
Correct. Getting it in the handbook and getting the statutes, none of that, because we won't meet again till August committee-wise, so. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Second motion.
Okay, I'll read the second one. Recommend approval, motion to approve policies 5.115, 5.400, 5.401, 4.700, 4.802, 4.803, 5.200, 5.201, 6.200, 6.317, 6.4001, 6.600, 1.400, and 6.312, as recommended by the policy committee.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve 5.115, 4.400, 4.401, 4.700, 4.802, 4.803, 5.200, 5.201, 6.200, 6.317, 6.401, 1.400, and 6.312, as recommended by the policy committee.
What about 6.600?
I'm excluding it from my motion.
How about second that?
You excluding it from the motion?
I am, and we can consider it in just a moment.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Nipper. All right, any further discussion?
You saying you want to bring 6.600 by itself?
Yeah, just for clean, we'll make an amendment to it, and we'll, you know, just vote it through by itself.
Is that good, Mr. Reed?
That's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Or Mr. Holliday?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the revision to Policy 6.600 only in as much as required by statute.
Then we're going to revisit it at the next meeting.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have it read into record, what exactly are we, the statute we keep mentioning that we need to vote on here?
Ms. McClure?
The change that, what will be added to the new policy as required by statute is if there is a transfer within the system, the school receiving, the receiving school will request the student record. The record should be completed and forwarded to the school to which the transfer is made by school personnel. No students will be allowed to handle his own record, and no record will be transferred until a request is made. When a student transfers to another school system within the system, copies of the student's records, including the student's disciplinary records, shall be sent to the transfer school. When a student transfers to a school outside the system, copies of the student's record, including the student's disciplinary record, shall be sent to the transfer school.
All good? Any other questions, comments? Mr. Jernigan? All good? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, so you'll have that back on the agenda in August. All right, general discussion. I'll just, if nobody else has anything, I've asked Mr. Odom to get with Mr. Evans and compile some zone exemption information of what actually is going on, because we've got, I figured verse, I figured doing it tonight versus tying up time next Tuesday, going over a lot of these details, so. Mr. Odom, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans has compiled the zone exemption information for this year. I thought it'd be more appropriate to do it tonight than, maybe when you have people doing appeals, at that particular time, so he's created a summary for you, and we'll kind of go over that with you right now. Take any questions that you might have.
This is very similar to the report that I prepared for the board last year around this time. I tried to duplicate the same type of information. Last year, the issue was how many students had taken the grandfather option for the high schools, because there was so many, so much movement going on with those four schools, and so that was the primary focus last year. But this year is similar. So far, as of this, as of today, we have processed 748 total zone exemption applications. Of those, you'll notice a majority of them are approved, as always, 655. 91 have been denied. One is a reversal. What that means, it's a zone exemption that has been approved in a previous year, and the parent has requested it be withdrawn for the upcoming year, so we call that a reversal. And one was a withdrawal, when the difference there is that's one that was filed this year for next school year, and then the person changed their mind and asked us to withdraw it. That's, that's the difference between the two. You'll note that as of the same time last year, we had processed 1,263 applications, although 568 of those were for the high school grandfather option, so if you subtract that number, we're about neck and neck where we were last year, pretty much apples to apples. The approval breakdown, you'll notice that the majority of those that have been approved on the top portion there, 202 are for employees. The board allows employees to take their children to the zone where they teach or work, so that's, that's a majority of those. 58 were exercising the grandfather option for one of the three middle schools. 34 were for the IB program at Oakland. Nine were for house contracts. That means that's someone who is moving to a different zone and has provided us a house contract that shows when they are closing during the first semester. That's under board policy as well. Seven were, because a sibling was attending the same school, the board has indicated in the past that it would like us to not separate families if at all possible. Five were for medical hardships that, I wanted to pull that one out, because medical hardships are very rare, and I just wanted to show that. And then four were approved by Mr. Odom on appeal, and I actually broke those down, Mr. Odom asked me to break those down. One was a sibling in a neighboring school. I had two siblings in a neighboring school. One was because of family medical hardship. One was because we learned during the appeal process that they had a sibling at the school. They had not disclosed that on the original application. And one was because the school they were requesting, it was Brown's Chapel, had more room than Blackman Elementary, and so we felt that was a good fit. So those were approved on appeal. Total denied to Stewart's Creek High School this year, that's for 1415, when I say this year, I mean the upcoming school year. There have been 10 total. Total denied last year, 27. Both of those, I found it was interesting that a majority of those denied came out of, were coming, requesting to come out of Smyrna High School. This year's number, there were six out of Smyrna High School, and last year it was 22 of the 27. So majority of those are coming out of Smyrna High, requesting to go. This does not include the numerous phone calls we've had for people inquiring about a zone exemption, so we think that number would be higher had they applied. These are typically the ones that wanted to try the process anyway and applied. And then just the last thing on the report is, these are the schools that are on this, on the list this year that cannot take zone exemptions for various reasons, usually because of overcrowding, or because of a recent zone change, or something like that. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Jernigan?
On the Oakland IB program, and once they get in Oakland, do we follow up and see if they remain in? Or since Oakland is not on the list that cannot accept exemptions, do we just let them stay?
We, we don't track that. The school administrators do that, and, and sometimes you'll have students who think they want to be in IB, and they'll get into it, and for whatever reason, they, they decide that it's not for them. But, but Mr. Spurlock has put in place a prerequisite criteria, so that, that eliminates some people who are saying that they want to go to IB, but actually don't want to do IB. He put that in a few years ago, very proactively, and, and that cut down some of the questions on those applying. So they have to meet, they're very similar entry standards for, that are for a central. They're the minimum kind of academic qualifications you need to have. Those aren't required to be in IB, but he put in some of those just so that there was no question about the types of students who were going there. But we don't track those once they're in the school, and it's like you said, Oakland does have room, so once they're there, it's okay.
What's the current enrollment at Blackman High?
Approximately 2,000, but I don't know the exact number.
It's a little short of 2,000.
Nineteen something.
I'm thinking 19.
It's shorter than 2,000.
Yeah, nineteen, close, close.
1980?
I want to say it's closer to 1950, 1940.
1950. Okay. I guess I've kind of been a catalyst. I made some comments Tuesday night about, about this circumstance, and- I made some comments Tuesday night about, um, about this circumstance, and, uh, we received packets of zone exemptions that are coming to appeal. Uh, out of the ninety-one that are denied, three will come before the board, uh, on an appeal. All three of those happened to be from the Laverne-Smyrna area, um, and so I took a look at those applications, and what struck me was that in every case, the receiving principal and sending principal, uh, cited per board directive, uh, that they denied these. So, the initial request was denied because of something that the board did. And so I went looking for what the board did, and we discussed Tuesday night, it's an indication of what the board did in that we established a zone for Stewart's Creek High School, and yet there's not a stipulation that was ever voted on by the board that says that zone exemptions will not be permitted out of Laverne High School or Smyrna High School to help preserve the zones approved by the Rutherford County Board of Education on December fourth, two thousand and twelve. I'm, I'm troubled by that because it singles out Smyrna High School and Laverne High School, and it doesn't mention Blackman High School, where we also re-zoned from Blackman High School. And so, I've been thinking about that in anticipation for the meeting that we'll have on June the tenth to consider those three applications. There are some compelling reasons in those three applications, and, uh, I remain undetermined as to what we may do that evening.
Two things if I might. This building is sometimes generically referred to as the Board of Education, and when the principals put that, they're not, they're not, they are misstating what the rule is. It, their meeting is a central office directive, not a board directive. They, they put that sometimes, and i- it's just a miscategory is all that is. Uh, the second distinction is, Blackman High School, the reason it was not included was it's still an overcrowded school, and because of the way the zoning worked, we actually needed a few more students to go there if they were wanting to do that. I think you remember during the, the hearings that we had all the Shores Road and all that area where, you know, we needed to zone a few more out, but, but there was so much opposition that the board changed that. The difference with Laverne-Smyrna is that they are no longer overcrowded. Uh, and so we needed a few more to leave Blackman, hopefully voluntarily, and so when we had that meeting with the four principals who were involved, uh, Blackman Principal was okay losing some. The other two principals asked for us to wait for a period of time because they were afraid they had already lost so many hundreds of students that they were gonna lose even more, and typically the students that leave on a zone exemption are your, you're better off students because the parents can afford to provide transportation and drive longer distances. They don't rely on bus transportation as much, and so you end up, your socioeconomic balance will get off even more so. So that was some of the reasons they had requests that we do that. Just for background information.
We, we had a big change in academics with Oakland and Seagull, uh, you weren't here, I don't think, maybe when the first opening of that. Um, it took us, took us many years to kind of work out of that and kind of get back to a balance again, so that was one of the desires in this particular case, is we opened a new school, new bricks draw quite a bit. And so to try to, um, maintain that academic focus and be able to have enough students to offer the courses that you need to, to offer and that sort of thing to do. Of course, again, prior history for zone exemptions, before, you know, I, I can recall sitting here in board meetings that where it took us two nights of, of zone exemptions here, and a three-ring binder, twenty or thirty exemptions, and of course, we've gotten down out of, you know, seven hundred and something, you've got three. So it, it's declined considerably, but we try to look at every one specifically, um, you know, but typically, uh, it will be, it will be a career and technical education course, because that's about the place that the schools go different. So, we have some uniqueness in career and technical education at several of our campuses all around the county, so usually that's what you'll see on those.
And oftentimes, the, uh, the motive for the exemption, not that, not particularly in these cases that we're gonna hear, but over the years that I've listened to them, many, many times they were athletically driven towards a team that was doing very well at that particular campus, and, uh, you know, I think we've, we've done our due diligence in the past, and that's why we don't have as many zone exemptions, because we've tried to stay true to those zone lines unless it was a very extreme situation, medical or, or something of that nature.
Well, you can see that there are very few appeals that have come through so far, and four to Mr. Odom that he's approved out of a few, and then, uh, three that have made it to the board level. We were discussing this today, it's, it's one of those situations where we feel if, if we approve a lot of appeals, then that encourages more people to appeal. Uh, we also try to keep an eye on the athletic situation, 'cause it's hard to know what someone's true motives are, and, and you'll probably notice in the packets from those three from Monday, you know, there are some athletes in there, and we're not saying that's necessarily the reason they're doing it, but that's one of the things that catches our eye, and we, we try to watch those things.
And it, it, there's a need for those community schools to have community members in those schools, so if you allow those, those community members to fan out to the county, you've taken away that community, uh, that stakeholder mentality, so, uh, you know, I, I commend the pass boards and, and, and what we've done in the past to stay as true to these zone lines as possible, except in extreme circumstances.
Well, and we also, you know, this, this list of schools that we put on the application, now we, we try to be upfront with parents and just communicate with them about which schools can and can't take zone exemptions. Just because it, it used to be they'd get a letter in the mail that said you've been denied, and they wouldn't necessarily wa, say why, and that also would encourage them to appeal, 'cause there was a lack of understanding. So we try to put these on there and explain upfront on the application, these schools are overcrowded, they can't take zone exemptions, or if there's another reason, as in this case with Stewart's Creek High, and then when they get the letter from us, it, it explains, here's why you've been denied, just so that they understand that, and I think that's to help somewhat too with people not appealing as much.
And with our rate of growth, uh, this list is gonna expand.
It is. It tends to hang around about half of our schools. Typically, we, we are opening enough schools where we, we always have about twenty-three, twenty-four that are on this list, and that fluctuates somewhat, but, you know, it, it just for raw numbers, about half of our schools are considered overcrowded right now.
I don't want to get into the specifics of the, uh, three cases that we'll hear, uh, on, on the tenth, but as I read through them, I'm challenged to find a reason other than the, uh, the stipulation that says you can't go from Laverne or Smyrna to Stewart's Creek that would put them in the category of denied, which is an enormous minority of the applicants. Uh, with six hundred and fifty-five approved and only ninety-one denied, uh, it seems like that the standard is that we approve a zone exemption, uh, you know, if it, if it comes in and if it is at all possible, and our, the policy that's in place is if there are open seats at that school and the principals sign off on it, then very likely it will be approved. Uh, and without that one policy, or not policy, uh, without that one circumstance, I'll call it, that says that you can't go from Laverne and Smyrna to Stewart's Creek, uh, I think that these three and possibly some others, but these are the three that have come before my board seat, they would have been approved. And so I think to myself, well, what is this that has gotten in the way? Because these people feel so compelled as to bring it to the board, and what I find is, uh, it is an interpretive, uh, statement, interpreting the board's intent. Uh, it's open-ended. Uh, as we discussed Tuesday evening, we're, we're not exactly sure when it's going to end. Will it end with the grandfathering? Does it end with two years of grandfathering or four years of grandfathering? And we're just in a place where maybe we need to intentionally discuss and establish when we have preserved the academic programs at Laverne and Smyrna, taking into consideration all that we learned from the situation between Oakland and Seagull, and how we very carefully, uh, held the faculty members and the amount of transfer of faculty members from, uh, the existing schools to the new school, which was a problem that we learned from Oakland and Seagull. We very carefully, uh, took into consideration the, uh, facilities and the equitability of, of, you know, access to, uh, parts and pieces, uh, be it, uh, books or desks or, or band instruments or, or whatever. Uh, we, we took careful consideration of that in the opening of Stewart's Creek, and we also, as a board, learned from the Oakland-Seagull experience and made specific, uh, improvements and, and program emphasis at Laverne and Smyrna to make those an attractive academic environment. And so I'm left to wonder, have we sufficiently bolstered Laverne and Smyrna to where they stand on their own, and perhaps it's time that the, uh, restriction, uh, be taken away? If it is there as nothing but a socioeconomic barrier, then we may be in a place where, uh, for a socioeconomic reason, it is actually discriminatory when we're under two thousand, the stated capacity at Blackman, and under two thousand at Laverne and Smyr. Uh, I certainly don't want that to be the case.
We had discussed ending it after this year, after we see what the enrollment is. Once the second year of grandfathering had ended, uh, there's a chance, I mean, we're, we're gonna be, uh, Mr. Zago could help me, is we're gonna be close to sixteen hundred, we think, this next.
Sixteen, thirty, forty.
Uh, and so, so they've grown by approximately two hundred and fifty to three hundred students this year. If that were to happen again, then they would be closer to nineteen hundred, and then we would have a better idea of how much capacity we have, that's, that's one, and, um, we're not, you know, like I said before, it's, it's not just these numbers, 'cause I realize these numbers seem kind of low, the ten and the twenty-seven, but we're worried about how many might be behind them, that once they think that's an option, we'll then ask for it, because we've had numerous requests over the phone inquiring about that possibility, um, and we're worried a little bit about opening the floodgates, but that's, that's where we are.
But you have to remember also that, that these students are, that desire of these career and technical programs, they're not being denied. Uh, the, the director of schools are allowing them to participate in those programs.
You can go and take that course at that school.
Right, so it, it's not that they're, they're being kept from that program, so if their desire is for, uh, for that training, for that education, they, they're, they have access to that.
And they are, yes, sir.
And, you know, and there's, there's always been that attraction as a, as a parent of children in the system and as a board member, you know, there's always been that attraction to new bricks and mortar. And like you said, uh, the career and technical, that's where it's diverse between the different campuses, and that's where you can, if you're not careful, you could cherry pick, well, I want to go to that school, so I'll take that course. So, you know, we have to be careful with that and make sure that, that, uh, that these zone lines are, you know, stay stable and stay true.
We also offer other choices, of course, for students in that area and other areas, uh, the IB program at Oakland, which we approve, and to Central Magnet, we even provide a shuttle bus to that area of the county, where we don't do that anywhere else in the county to, to make it easier on them if they want to participate. So they do have some choices, uh, in my opinion, if they, they would like to seek out other academic opportunities.
But, you know, we, we tell the children that go, that want to take the IB program at Oakland, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll let you go, you know, if that's what career you want to take, but, but, you know, we want to tell children, I, I see it, that we want to tell children at Laverne and Smyrna that, I know you want to take this culinary arts because your family is in, uh, you know, the food service business, but, you know, we can't let you go unless you drive yourself over there. And that's a burden, to have to drive them, go pick them up after their class, when they can stay the whole day. But, I mean, you know, uh, and, you know, I think that goes for the nursing program or the dental hygienist program that was there, that we're offering at this one school, we're don't offering at all of them. So I, I see that we need to kind of quit looking at the intent that a child is there just because it's brand-new school, and think about this child could be a dental hygienist or some other child that could one day be the president, I don't know. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
They could rise and do great things because we let them go to those schools. I don't know.
Ms. Jergen?
Tell them that transportation going to, uh, you know, the area that I, I represent is a, is still, if you want to call it, if there's rural area left in the county, I'm, I'm there. And our kids don't get transportation to the IB program. And I've, I remember very well, when we talked about Laverne and Smyrna, we were going to provide transportation for that area, and my feeling then was, was we're going to provide transportation from, for them, because they're twenty miles away. What about my folks? They're twenty miles away too. And so, I, I, it's not that I don't appreciate what we're talking about here, but if, if they're able to take that class and they want, that's what they're wanting to go there for, at this time, you know, I see that as a, you're not denying them that educational opportunity. You are making it more difficult for them, but you're not denying, but there's other kids that are participating in programs throughout this county that are having a difficult time getting what they want. Uh, so, I, I'm a little bit concerned about this idea of, you know, this group being treated a little bit differently than the others, but there are circumstances tied to that, and I think there are viable circumstances.
Blair?
I agree. I don't want to stop, knock, knock over here and wipe out what we just accomplished, 'cause last year we was in here worried about how we was gonna keep kids at Laverne and Smyr, and we've done it, we've accomplished those things, and I think we need to stick to what we've done here and play this thing out and see, see how it goes.
I think one, uh, I think one of the biggest things, uh, the way I look at this whole situation here, I think we pretty well knew this thing was gonna run two ye, run its course two years. Uh, that's where I, that's the way I see it. Uh, I think the, the principal formed it that way also.
Yes, sir.
You know, the other concern I have, you got ten other ones here that have been denied. What do you do with those ten? So, I mean, you gotta never, you know, you start reversing right now, you gotta, you, we're gonna sure enough have a problem. Uh, you know, I, I've been here when, when you, you did have the two nights, uh, if you want to say two nights of misery, and I mean, it wasn't fun. I'll be, I'll just sit here and tell you, and I mean, the board's worked hard over the years to try to, uh, to try to come to something that, uh, is easy for the staff to deal with and easy, you know, for the board to deal with, and, uh, I think what's been accomplished has, has, uh, worked well for the whole system, and, uh, you know, I just hate to see it backtrack. I'm hoping, uh, as Mr. Odom said, next year, uh, you know, being, being able to open up the, the Stewart's Creek deal, uh, the possibility of doing that. You know, in regards to, uh, in regards to the IB program at Oakland, uh, the whole difference, for doing that, you gotta qualify to get in there, and, uh, I think that's the biggest difference in what them versus do in some of these situations, and, uh, and just everybody doesn't get in on that thing, and, you know, that's just my, that's just my take on, on that, uh.
Blackman will also grow some from, if you remember, we grandfathered a number of students into Riverdale. We moved some of the parking complexes and things that's over near Sam's and so going there. So, over these two years, as that expires, um, Blackman will be picking up those students 'cause that is now the zone to Blackman, uh, rather than to Riverdale, so not only So not only their growth in housing, they, they're going to experience more coming in simply the same way that Stewart's Creek High is experiencing as that grandfathering expires. So that's one of the reasons we basically left them on the list, not to, to go there, is because their growth very quick is going to be over 2,000, I think.
Mr. Evans, if you would comment, comment on the house contract deal. How do you operate with that, as far as new construction and all this stuff?
The board policy says that if someone is moving, moving into another school zone during the first semester of the school year, we can go ahead and grant them a temporary zone exemption, so that their kids don't have to switch schools in the middle of the year. That actually includes Ada County as well, with, with its in-board policy. It's one of the few exceptions for Ada County exemptions. So what we typically do is have them provide us either with a pending lease, if they're moving into an apartment and they're waiting for it to open up, or for their other lease to end, or for their house contract that shows when their anticipated closing date is, and the address of that property. And we check those, and Karen and I follow up on those as the date. So, for example, if you say you're going to close on August 15th, on August 15th, you know, or the 16th, we start calling, saying, okay, according to your record, you should be in your house now. Where are you? If you're in there, they didn't, then have to provide us a closing statement that shows they've closed on the house, and two utility statements for where they've activated utilities at that address. And then we close them out. So that's worked very well. You know, we have a lot of building going on in this county, of course, and so a lot of times, this time of year, people are starting to build, and that means it'll be ready sometime in the fall, typically, five to six months to build a house.
Only reason, only reason I brought that up is, is I've experienced it with Mr. Evans as a board member, having to supply Mr. Evans with a ladder.
I didn't cut him any slack.
And, and, and the reason I'm bringing it up is, I had to supply Mr. Evans with a second ladder. It wasn't, it wasn't Mr. Evans, it'd been there 30 days, it was supplying with another ladder. So I'm just saying, he stays on top of this, and I just wanted to see how he did the, the new house, the contract deals. But I do know on building a house, that he'll, he'll come after you if you don't have, if you're not moved in. And as a board member, he, he had to send me a notice, so.
About two years ago, his secretary followed the family into Cannon County, too. She didn't believe it was her, so she followed him. One day, in fact...
On her own, I told her, on her own. If she wanted to investigate, she could, and she did.
That's some serious due diligence.
She had a hunch.
Anybody else? Any other topics? All right, if there's nothing else, we'll see everyone Tuesday. Is that right? Tuesday, 5:30. We're done.